Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
All right, roll call.
Thank you, Your Honor. Are you here today?
I'm here.
Okay. Councilmember Moreford?
Here.
Councilmember Sashau?
Here.
Councilmember Caper?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Boyett?
Here.
Councilmember Parks?
Here.
All right, next on the agenda is public comment or audience participation for items not on the agenda. Does anybody wish to speak tonight? All right. Next on the agenda is presentation, possible action on a request for in-kind services and fees for the Break the Silence Festival. Mr. Underwood.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Kelly did such a great job last meeting. We figured we'd bring her back. So, we're here to present the Break the Silence in-kind application. The fees are broken down to a total in-kind requested of around $2,500 and change. Breaking the Silence is going on its ninth year. It's been a great collaboration and partnership with the city of Fort Morgan to this point. It's one of our events that she's really worked with our Parks Department and those to streamline things. And we couldn't be more in favor of council approving this request. And before that, I'll let Kelly say anything.
I just want to say thank you all for having me and the support that you've shown Break the Silence over the last decade almost. So, thank you. Without the support, we wouldn't be where we're at and we wouldn't be expanding this year as well. So, yes, thank you. Does anybody have any question?
I guess my question is, what's a power pedestal? I went down looking at that and I was going...
You need all of them. I really do.
That's our, that's our light and power department who, those are heavy. Those are those pedestals they tie in, that tie in, food trucks will tie in, resourcer. All those, those are all the additional power pedestals that you see along Beaver Avenue for all that stuff.
Oh, okay.
And like I said, they, they put out tons of them. I don't envy those guys because those little things are heavy.
It's a workout. You can skip leg day.
All right. Any further discussion? In that case, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a resolution for the in-kind services for Breaking the Silence in the amount of $2,569.
Second.
I have a resolution by Jim Parks, second by Bill Garcia. Vote my roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
That's pretty simple.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Try to get some good weather.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, that's right.
Fifty percent.
That's right.
All right, next is presentation, possible discussion on funding for the aquatic facility. Mr. Nation, Mr. Underwood.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and kick things off. As we've been going through this process, I outlined in my memo, we're, we've kind of reached that point now where you guys have had time to digest the presentation that was made by ASENZA on the projected or proposed type of facility that we may be looking at for indoor aquatics in the city of Fort Morgan. And so, now that we've given you some time to think about that, and I don't know if you've had input from citizens or anything like that, but as staff, we're kind of reaching that point now. We need to talk to you about, okay, are we, are we wanting to go ahead and move this forward? And so, with that comes along the discussions about how we're going to pay for this and what goes along with that, with the vote of the people. And so, I kind of outline in my memo that if we are going to move forward with this, it seems to make sense that a sales tax is the best mechanism to pay for that. We're looking at something about a 1%. And so, so tonight, I think that's where we're going to start off is, you know, are we, are we wanting to go ahead and move this forward now that we've been looking at this for a couple of years? And is that council's desire to go ahead and keep moving forward? And then, are you guys comfortable with the sales tax discussion? And do we need to now gear up and, and move forward on getting ready to get things ready for a ballot question, so?
One question I'd have, I mean, one thing that really started this discussion going again was realization that Riverside pools are in need of some major repair. I know that one time when the director was talking to me, probably eight more years ago, he estimated at that point there'd be $8 million. Do we have any idea what kind of money we'd be looking at if we just went with repairs on Riverside?
I think Matt has a fairly decent idea.
We would be looking at anywhere in the five to eight million dollar range, depending on once we started getting out of some of our grandfathered aspects. We'll have about a million dollars in resurfacing. We have significant deck repair that'll have to be done, probably to the tune of another million. Three million to make our guard check bathhouse, if you will, ADA compliant. That'll take us to five million. The slide, while we had it refinished three years ago, in order for it to last another decade, there will be a good chance that it's probably, as things get more updated and more modernized, that that, the breakdown of that slide's going to exist. And then, we always still have the ongoing issues of our boilers that are in a flood plain. For example, we lost the pool, the east pool this weekend during the big storm on Friday night because the water gets so high that we submerged one of the pumps that runs the east pool in that water. So, we would be looking at five to eight million dollars, depending on the slide aspect of it, over the course of the next five to, five to 10 years, just to make sure we were able to make it that decade.
Okay, and what about, I know at times we've had trouble with the pool leaking and having to worry about the pipes and the, we'll just call it infrastructure for other stuff. What about all of that? That look like?
To be honest with you, it's, I would err on the side of disaster. Our waiter pool currently, we've undersized the pipe, which has minimalized our leaking there. We got lucky two years ago that the leaking that was taking place was actually bad aqua stats, which was the best case scenario. But honestly, if our surface is in the condition it is, our decking is in the condition it is, you can imagine what that piping underneath all of that's doing. I mean, it's not poly pipe by any stretch. It's rubbing, it's moving and stuff like that. And remember, we do, while treated, the water we bring into this bad boy, it's, you know, it runs through some things, let's put it that way. But yeah, it's, it's definitely infrastructure-wise, we're looking at that minimum five day without a catastrophe. And that's to have it for the 71 days of swimming that we utilize it for, over the next 10 years.
I think one point you haven't brought up too, though, is the fact that you're still in a flood zone. And we do flood around here. And we'd hate to lose any improvements we make on the current location to a flood. Been a problem in the past.
Man, I don't know if you can ask this, or answer this question, or Brett. My understanding is the Brush Public Pool is kind of in the same boat as we are. That it's, it's not doing well either. That's what I've heard.
I don't know the details, but I'm sure it's got to be about the same generation of construction and everything. So, it's probably, yeah, we'll see some of the same necessary repairs. They just have the advantage of it. Well, no, I was about to say, it's not in a flood plain, but it is. It's in Beaver Creek flood plain, so I take that back.
Yeah, and we have, we know some of their, I went to AFO with one of their individuals who take care of those. And so, you can't go to a training and swap stories. So, I can tell you the stories that I hear that they have to battle with. They've got their own issues, yes.
Okay, well, what let's do is just have everybody kind of comment on what their comments are, and we'll just start down with Lauren. We'll kind of work down so everybody can put their comments out there.
Well, personally, I'm fully in favor of moving forward with the project. I worry that any tax measure is often, you know, it's one of those crap shoots where you don't know if enough residents who pay taxes are going to support it. I would love to see a way that if we were going to have to fund that five to eight million dollars out of some other part of our city budget, that we could offer more of a contribution so that we weren't asking so much of, if we already have money that would have to cover that cost, maybe we could work something else out to move this along. I personally, I hope there are enough folks that would see the value and the value add in, in building this facility. But again, as a tax, I just don't know.
John?
I don't see another way around it. I just feel like that's where we need to be going, is with a new construction. I would look forward to having something that is year-round usable, which I think would be an improvement for our community. I see a lot of benefits and I really don't want to add more money to Riverside, knowing the history of what we have down there and the cost of improving something. I don't think our finished product's going to be worth it and only usable for three, four months a year, maybe, if you like swimming in the spring, which I remember growing up. So, for our swim team, for some of our high school athletes, I just, I don't see a way how to not proceed it, proceed it, proceed and allow our community to make the decision yes or no.
I agree with John. Thirty million is what we're looking at?
Yeah, that's the all-in price. That would include design work if this moves forward from next year, some of the utility stuff. There's some of that 30 million that would probably come off, that we would, you know, handle internally. But yeah, the all-in price for everything and the fancy roof and all that was 30 million.
And just, some might not know exactly how much we do pay for sales tax here. What is that, Brett?
Right now, we have a 4% sales tax across the city of Fort Morgan.
It would go up to five?
Yep.
And the state takes how much from us?
2.9%.
So, now we're, there we go. I, I agree with John. I just don't see a way around this. And by a sales tax, the people that visit our community, buy groceries here, can help, help do that. And, and I, I agree, you know, put lipstick on the pig down there and you still only get to use it for, what'd you say, 72 days? Seventy-one days. There you go. So, I think we need to give it to the citizens and let them decide. I agree with, with Lauren down there. Wish we could take care of it herself, but I don't see how we can do that.
All right, Jim?
I agree with Lauren. My concern is another sales tax, our utilities are going up. But I ultimately think that this needs to go to the vote and let the citizens decide. And if they choose not to, then, and they choose not to, I, I think it's, in the long run, it will pay for itself. But I worry about the cost that it's going to incur to our citizens. That's my concern.
Mr. Bill?
Well, for myself, I've, I've been advocate from the start. I, I see the, I see the long-term benefits, the attractiveness of this, of this facility and the usefulness of it. I understand that nobody wants to pay another tax. Nobody wants to, you know, if, if you look at the, if you look at the big number, it scares you. If you look at the, if you look at the penny, it doesn't, it's not so bad. But on the other hand, you know, it's a tax. And all of a sudden, tax has become a bad word when that is always back in the community. That's what keeps us going. That's what paves our street. That's what keeps the cops on the street. That's what keeps us safe and keeps the lights on. So, for me, I'm, I'm advocate and, you know, and I, I hope the people agree that this would be a very good thing for the city.
Yeah, I agree with everything being said by everybody up here. I don't think we should continue putting a Band-Aid on our current pool. Is this just going to cost us? We're going to be putting a Band-Aid on every year. As Doug said, you know, we've got two different levels here, 20 million and 30 million if we go all in on this. I will say, looking at the debt coverage on that, the 1% will cover it. I wouldn't say strong, but it will cover it. I'm worried about, I like to see the other cost of what maintenance is going to be, staffing it's going to be, and going forward and how that 1% is going to cover everything. And that's not presented here, so. But at the 30 million, the debt coverage ratio over the 20 years, I wouldn't say it's strong as it's mentioned in our, in our write-up here, but it's acceptable.
The, the maintenance cost and all that stuff was covered in the presentation by ASENZA, and that's the 1.3 million that I referenced in my memo.
Okay, I guess I missed that.
Yeah, that, that came directly from their reports. And so, they, they did look into all that. And so, that 1.3 million was all-inclusive of what that size of facility would need. And so...
Okay, so, that's 1.3 million in a year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
On top of the 2.2 debt service on that? So...
Yep.
So, that would, if we had a hiccup in our taxes, that would, in our tax revenue?
Yeah, I mean, it would, if we did have a hiccup, it would require us to reshuffle the rec budget around in order to make sure...
But over the last three, four, oh, since 2017, our tax revenue has increased dramatically over the years. So, the first quarter of this year, we were down about five, what did I calculate? We were down about 6%. We were down the first quarter of 2025. But the first two months of the second quarter, it increased, we have an increase of 7% over year-to-date. So, it's skimmed around.
Yep.
Myself, again, I'm in favor of, if you remember, that's kind of how we got the field house. We're going to have to have repairs on the armory and decided that we'd just go ahead with the field house. Again, I think the same thing here. Everything anybody said, I do agree with. Remember, Fort Morgan does have one of the lowest sales taxes in the state and everything. The other thing that I think I would want on it is I would want a sunset law on the one cent and maybe then go down to a half or a quarter, once we have the bond paid off for operation and management. But I wouldn't be in favor of that staying up there and everything. So, that'd be another carrot that we could offer to the public as far as that. The other thing about it with us having then the field house and the aquatic center and everything is not only just for the kids year-round, but I also think that it would be attractive to bringing other people when they're looking at Fort Morgan, either as a place to live. Of course, we've got fiber now, so people that can work from home could look at Fort Morgan or new businesses looking at what's available for their employees if we're bringing in new primary employers. So, I would be in favor also. Does anybody from the ad hoc committee want to talk or anything?
Hopefully, she's angry.
You'll need to sign in on the sheet there first.
Hi, most of you know me, so I'm Bella Hepke-Laws. And I've been on the ad hoc committee since it formed 18 months ago, two years ago. And first, I just want to thank you all for, you know, getting us to this point, for prioritizing this conversation. Most of you probably know better than I how long of a slog this has been, how long time coming this has been. I have been to more pools than I can count. I got to about 30 and stopped from my years of competition and then now in my 12th season as the Marlin coach and then just having two little kiddos who love water. So, I, I feel fairly confident when I say that the facility presented to you by ASENZA more than meets the current and future needs of the community. Because I know that was a priority of council. You didn't want the ad hoc committee to think about, you know, just what we need, what, what we could possibly do at a very bare minimum. You wanted us to think expansively. And this, this facility is expansive. It, it would benefit every community member, you know, in some way. Whether they want that hot tub, whether they want those lane lines, whether they want that zero depth for their kiddos. Like, it, it's really attractive and awesome for the population as a whole. That said, I know taxes are a hard conversation. I know that there are a lot of things we could be spending our tax dollars on. And so, I know I am beyond biased, but I feel, I feel very confident when I say that building an indoor pool would just be a pretty monumental thing for not only the people of Fort Morgan, the people of Morgan County, the people in this entire, you know, northeastern Colorado region. And so, I do want you all to know that there are community members who, if you do, you know, pass, you know, agree to put this on the ballot, will, you know, pick up the torch, will be out there knocking on doors, trying to convince other people that, you know, this is, this is a benefit. And so, again, you know, thank you for helping us get to this point.
That was the other thing that I was hoping to get from you, is the willingness to try and educate the public prior to the election and with putting it on and everything, because once we decide to do it, as the city and city council, we cannot become involved in campaigning for it. So, we're going to need a strong campaign. And by campaign, I typically mean just education. You know, let people know that for our elderly, there's going to be a hot tub and there's going to be a warm pool for pool exercising and everything. So, I'm like you, I think it's expansive as far as what it's covering, so appreciate it.
Quick question. How, since you're a coach of the Marlins, how many Fort Morgan kids are in the Marlins?
So, just this season, we have 85 kids on our roster. We are, we pride ourselves on being very inclusive, so that's across Morgan County. We've got folks from Brush and most of them primarily practice in Brush. And so, to answer your question, Brush's pool might be in worse condition than Fort Morgan's. But then, we've got, we've got friends from Wiggins and then, but the majority are from Fort Morgan. I'd say 60 of our swimmers. And honestly, this is a low year for us. We often reach levels of over 100 swimmers. We just had, we had to raise our rates and we lost some pool time this year, so we're down a little.
So, the second question is, is if, and hopefully it does pass, are you going to be promoted to the high school coach?
I mean, that would be the goal, I suppose.
We have an answer in the back.
We, we have a really strong coaching staff that has been committed through the years. And so, I, I would certainly hope that, you know, we would be able to kind of, yeah, expand to meet that need for the, for the high school teams. I would, we, we lose so many really talented swimmers at about age 12, 13, because they realize that for them to continue swimming, they, their family really has to commit either... So, I drove to Sterling. That, that program doesn't exist anymore. So, most of, if, if we have kiddos continuing on, they go to Greeley. And that's just not an ideal situation. So, I think we could, I think we could, you know, recruit a, a team, especially knowing that when I was on the Sterling team, there were girls from Brush, Wiggins, Holyoke, Akron. There, there were girls from all over the whole entire region. And so, I, I would see that, we'd be kind of a beacon for, you know, for aquatics in the whole area.
All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Bella.
Kate, now, do you need a motion? Or do you consider everybody saying, yeah, they're in favor about enough?
Yeah, we're just looking for direction tonight, because we'll have to, we'll have to work with not only our attorneys that are here tonight, but we also have bond attorneys that we're bringing into this discussion. We will also bring underwriting in for approval with council at the next meeting. And so, once we get that team all together, then we will have a more formalized vote on what the ballot language looks like and all that. Jill has informed me that we've got until September 5th to get all that put together. So, we've got a lot to do over the next month and a half, but we will get that done. So, the other thing I guess I need is, are we, are we wanting to look at the sunset portion of that? Is that consensus amongst the group to go ahead and, and write that into this discussion?
I would agree with the mayor and some, on some setting it and having a smaller at the end of it to do the maintenance.
I agree.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
All right.
Very good.
Sounds like a unanimous for everything.
Yeah, I think we've got our direction and we'll start working on that right away. And then, we will be back in front of you with hopefully some language and everything for you to review.
All right, super.
I want better clarification on the two options of, maybe Jeff, please find me a cup of coffee. But the bond is 1.5 and the 2.5?
Yeah, I mean, don't, don't get lost in these numbers. This was, this was, this was analysis that we did, you know, like three or four months ago, just so we had a feel for the direction that this was going. Right now, I need to get the underwriter under contract so he can actually do official work for us, and that's what we're in the process of doing. And so, yeah, this was just little steps at a time. It's just like the concept design that you looked at, you know, for the facility itself. We've got really good numbers and all that stuff in, but we still have millions of dollars worth of design work to do before we can go build the facility. And it's just like these numbers. Piper Sandler was more than happy to give us some generalized numbers to help us focus in on how much of a sales tax increase would be needed and everything. And so, so these will all change when we get to that next round of discussions. This is, yeah, so.
All right, next. Next is presentation, possible discussion on a resolution supporting the application to Colorado DOLA for Main Street candidate program.
Sandy.
Good evening. Presented before you is a resolution indicating the city's intention and support to apply for a national Main Street designation status through the Department of Local Affairs. For certified communities, the Main Street program presents a host of benefits, including mini grants for tangible investments to the downtown area, scholarships for training and networking, meeting facilitation and consulting services, and architectural expertise for proposed landscaping and visual improvements. The opportunity was presented to the council by representatives from DOLA on November 19th. The council consensus was to conduct a public open house to gauge interest and reception. An open house event was subsequently held on January 23rd with more than 30 interested individuals in attendance. We have inquired about interest in serving on an advisory board and have had a sufficient number of applications for the recommended cross-section board composition. The next step in the process, if we were to make an application, is to approve the resolution before you that has been vetted by the city's legal team. I can answer any question, or I think Brett can add some items as well.
Yeah, we just, we wanted to bring this resolution to you, because this is one of those kind of where we had the presentation before about what the program was going to be about and all that. And so, you guys listened to that. They, the way this is kind of set up is we've got to do a lot of legwork going into the final application and everything. And so, we now have this informal group that has met once with Sandy to have these discussions. And so, before we got further down this road, I wanted to make sure that we had something in front of you as our governing body that said, you know, we're now basically saying we're on board with, you know, putting an application towards this and moving towards being a, a Main Street program community and everything. And so, so this is kind of the first resolution that DOLA presents to say, you know, you guys are on board with it and we'll sign the, sign the MOU and things like that. And so, but more than anything, we just want to make sure that you as council are still okay with us moving forward on this type of designation. We're going to have to have this informal group if we get a thumbs up, you know, and a affirmative vote on this resolution. We're going to have to have this group get together again and talk about what constitutes the boundaries of our Main Street program area and all that. And so, I just wanted to make sure that we got the court, the cart and the horse in the right order here and made sure that council was okay with us moving forward with this. And, and so, we're here to answer any questions on this that you may have.
So, anybody have any questions? Any comments? So, you just need direction again, or do?
No, this is one of those that we would...
To accept the resolution?
Yeah. Yeah, we would like to have the resolution adopted. Yes.
In that case, I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I'd like to make a resolution supporting an application to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs, DOLA, for the Colorado Main Street program.
Second. Who did that?
Lauren.
Okay. So I have a resolution by Jim Parks, so it's like my Lauren Boyette, but my roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you. We'll proceed.
And just because it's boring, we'll skip item number seven.
All right.
Mr. Nation.
Okay. Tonight, we're going to get into discussion on a bunch of the different general fund accounts that the city has. And so I will handle the first handful of these. I'm not sure how many there are. But we are going to start with the mayor and council budget. And so the first one that you see in there has a caveat already with it. That's the salaries and wages that you guys make as elected officials. We are going to have a separate conversation at the next meeting, August 5, to discuss any changes to that specifically. So that was a request that came up during the mayor's meeting. So that's the number that's in there, just because that's what you guys are making right now. But we will have a more formalized discussion on potentially changing that number on August 5. The rest of it is pretty straightforward with that. We did make some adjustments to your education and training, just because of the trends of what you've been spending. We lowered that just a little bit, and we lowered the dues and subscriptions to match with what we've been spending. CML is the biggest one that falls under that one. So be happy to answer any questions that is in the mayor and council budget.
I don't see, maybe it's included on something, but that Hawaiian retreat.
Well, we can add that in.
I want to point out those reductions.
Okay. The next budget that is in your packet is my budget, the city manager budget. Once again, I'm trying to bring some things down in line with what we're seeing with spending trends. The advertising budget, we reduced down to $1,000. And then dues and subscriptions, we reduced a little bit online. But everything else is staying in lines with where it's been. So I would be happy to answer any questions on that one. Okay. Next one in the budget, I've been instructed to slash to zero.
Oh, come on.
Oh, he's paying attention. I didn't know. The next one is our city attorney budget. We're just looking to keep that at the figure that it was at this year. That is also where we, not only is that Jeff's budget, we will see like the bond council that we end up hiring to come in on these bonding issues, not only this pool issue, but we will need bond council for the things that are going to be taking place with the wastewater treatment and everything. And so we've got money in that budget to handle that type of legal advice. But yeah, we're not asking for any changes in that budget at all.
You need to specify which Jeff's budget.
Oh, yes. Jeff Wilson's budget. And maybe we can squeeze a Hawaii trip out of this one.
And of course, the paper.
Further discussion, right?
You got to be there.
Okay. Next one in here is the general government budget. The overwhelming majority of that is for this building here. And so you find office supplies, utilities in there. The one that ventures outside of this building is that maintenance of general property, that $45,000 that you see in there. This is the maintenance line item that we use for the properties that we own, that we're doing our own weed control and mowing and things like that on. So the parcels that we still own in Center Point, we've got to pay for the large-scale mowing operations that take place to keep the weeds down on that. And so that's the line item that you see. And that's why it's fluctuated up and down the last several years. It depends on how much rain we get and how many times we have to have somebody go out there and mow it. And so that's where we keep those things. But everything else is tied to this facility.
I'd like to make a comment about that. I wanted to commend you on that maintenance of that area now. I mean, I've been walking it for the last couple of years. This year, it looks great. I love it.
Yeah.
That's-
We've switched to a new guy that's working on that for us. And so he's been doing a really good job of keeping up. His schedule is a lot more flexible than the last companies that we were using. And it's very noticeable when we call him and say, can you get over there and get on it? He's over there within a day and gets on it.
Yes, it is.
And stays on top of it.
Yeah, I wanted to commend you on getting that done. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no questions on that one, we'll switch to the finance budget. And I'll have Casey come up and present that one.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. The finance budget, for the most part, is all looking a little bit better. I've reduced several things on here. The first one is data processing. Last year, we budgeted too high. I think we just had an error in budgeting. We were trying to consolidate where all of our softwares are coded, and I think we included too much in that. So we only have two software for the finance department. So we'll need $45,000 for that. Office supplies reduced to 6,000. We just have not been spending as much as we've been budgeting in the past. So we're reducing it. Same with employee recognition. We're trying across the board to standardize how much we're giving each department for employee recognition. So you'll see that in some upcoming meetings, too. In the past, they've always been a standard amount based on full-time employees. So we're standardizing that. And then conferences and conventions, we're reducing that. We took two employees to two separate conferences last year, and we had plenty of money budgeted. So we're reducing that to 2,500. The only line going up is engineering and consulting. The cost of the audit goes up every single year. So we're just adding 5,000 to include the cost of the audit. Any questions?
I have a question. So the employee recognition, you're cutting it. I understand that. But is that money going to other?
Other departments?
Yes.
We're trying to standardize it. So you will see in some of the upcoming ones, as we go through community services, where we will be increasing it in some departments. So some departments have had large budgets in the last couple of years, and some departments have had hardly any. And so we're just trying to standardize $50 per full-time employee.
I'm not going to lie. I kind of have a problem with that.
Okay.
And the reason why is the employees is what makes this city run. And they need to be recognized on a monthly, on a three-month and a six-month. I get what we're doing, and I understand that we're going across the board. But I will always have a hard time cutting any kind of employee recognition. It's just not-
I agree. And just so you know, in the finance department, we do a monthly celebration for everything. We get together once a month and do a celebration. Part of the reason to do this is we thought it was unfair that some departments were getting thousands of dollars, and some departments were getting $200. And so there's also, there has to be some way to make it fair across all employees.
The reason why I say that, we have five city, or we have four ex-city employees and one city employee up here. And I understand most of us don't do it for the recognition, but it's always nice to get that.
Yeah.
So I will, it's just not your department. If another department comes up and reduces employee recognition, I'll have a problem with that also.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with Jim completely. That's very important. And that did become a concern for me also.
Yeah. I understand that. I'm just trying to find a way to standardize it across the board so that some departments are not getting more than others, because that also does not feel good to employees, from my perspective.
Well, I think that's very important, so you don't create discord within the city employee pool as a whole.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you, Casey. Now, we'll turn it to Jill and the clerk's budget.
All right. So there's not very many changes that you see on here. We are no longer posting legal notices and publications in the newspaper. So that amount has been reduced significantly. Other things, we just aren't spending as much money on office supplies, records management. So that has been reduced. And also, you'll see another big one. We are reducing the election budget, because it's an off-election year next year, because we only have elections on odd years, for the most part. And then we're just reducing to match spending on dues and subscriptions. And I don't really know how to explain that next one, so I'll let Brett do it.
Yeah, we had put money in this year's budget in case we needed to do extra work with the accessibility issues that we're going through with the state. And I think with what we're doing in-house and who we're working with, we may not even spend the 2025 budget money and everything, but we do have that if we need more this year. But we definitely don't need anything budgeted for next year.
Is that on the website?
So, yeah, the majority of that discussion revolves around the website, making sure that it meets all the new state laws and requirements that went into effect at the first of this month. And so, yeah.
We are doing a website redesign. Mel and I have been working. We're going to be getting started on that here within the next couple of weeks, but it will take about six to eight months for it to actually launch. So we're trying to hurry up and get that done. Because once that redesign is up there, they are telling us we will be in compliance with the AA regulations. But we do have a plan on the website that states we're actively working on getting it accessible. So we are not in any legal trouble.
There we go. Thumbs up from the attorney.
Got you.
Okay. Any more questions about the clerk's budget? Okay. I'll have Tom come up, and he can present the airport budget.
Good evening, mayor and council. For the airport budget, it really stays about the same, except for maintenance of general property. The FBI has- Bailey, come here. The FBI has asked for a couple of items. The runway lights at the end of the runway at one end are starting to falter, and they're having to operate them on maintenance mode and by manual. And they cannot get parts to replace them. So they've requested update on that, and they've given us a quote initial cost that they believe that will be of about $12,000. And then also, they'd like to add some more parking blocks and some larger blocks to delineate some of the roads and kind of funnel traffic. So that's the increase that you see of about $15,000 there over what we typically spend, which I think that's worthwhile in addition to consider. And with that, I can answer any other questions. Everything else, we think we can stay the same. I know with education and training, with me coming on board, we are seeing what that's going to be. And we'll continue to look at that as well.
Okay. Okay. If there's no questions on that one, we'll move to the last one, and that's human resources and Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm kind of going along with everybody else's. I feel like we've taken a look at them and trying to reduce a couple. So I'll just go through the changes. We are reducing the wellness program that we offer. So we're bringing that down to kind of where we've been the last couple of years. So we're reducing that by five. And then our conferences and conventions, we're dropping down to 2,000. Safety committee, we used to run $1,000 for, it used to be ran within us, but those are kind of being divvied up between each department. Any questions you might have about mine?
Well, if you go by our earlier presentation for employment, employee recognition, you have three employees.
Yep. But however, out of my, yeah, and like, just to explain-
25,000 for three employees.
25,000. We do all of our service awards out of that budget. We pay for our employee picnic, employee luncheons, our holiday party, all those things. So that might get brought up.
Talk about standardized.
Yes.
What is the rent? I mean, who do we pay rent to when I see that?
Okay. I'll handle that one. So some of the different buildings that the city were actually basically paid for through the electric fund. And so when we have general fund offices that are sitting in buildings that were purchased through the funds of the electric department, we pay rent from those general governments back, too. But we also do the opposite. So the utility director is in a building that was purchased basically by the general fund. And so the utility director pays rent then back into the general fund. And we've gone through and done square footage analysis of all that and come up with a square foot price. And those are the numbers that are in there. And we try to examine those every so many years, just to make sure, as we've moved offices around, that the rents are being allocated correctly. Good question.
I'd like to, you can borrow this to talk to Caper.
Give him a whack. I thought it was going to come out. It's a good question. Anything else you guys can think of?
Can I ask you, on the wellness program, is that just promotional?
So the wellness program, we pay out of our funds for all the biometrics. So that comes out of that fund. And then we'll hold to try to, we try to do different wellness events throughout the year to encourage our employees to go in to get wellness, physicals, dental, vision checks. And then we do some different little, what are they called?
Lunch and learns?
Yeah, lunch and learns to try to educate our employees. And then we hold different challenges.
No, I think it's extremely important. I just, you know, but of course, you have to look at your budget, and you have to look at previous years expenditures on that. So I was just curious on-
We used to do it through a different company, and we've brought it in-house, which has been able to, we've been able to reduce that.
Okay. I think that's great, because then it ultimately affects our premiums on our insurance and stuff like that. Thank you very much.
Yep. Anything else?
Brent, I got one comment for everybody. You know, since we've started it this year, I've noticed that our budget stuff has come down some. And I really appreciate that, because you know, we got to kind of keep things in check a little bit, because we really don't know.
Yeah. And it goes back to some of Jeff's comments earlier about the sales tax numbers. It's one of those that going into this type of economic world that we're in, good, bad, or indifferent to the politics of the world, there's a lot happening. And we continue to monitor those sales tax numbers, and they are kind of across the board being up and down. And so it's going to be interesting. And that's why when we discussed pay options for the employees, we have kept those just as an option. We haven't guaranteed anything until we get a little further into this fiscal year and see how things are going. And so we're, and when the directive was handed down by me to the managers going into the budget cycle, it was, we need to keep these things as tight as possible. This is just the type of year that we don't want to get caught in a situation where we're asking for a lot of stuff that then all of a sudden, we can't afford. And so my managers have done an excellent job with following- done an excellent job with following that instruction as we've gone through this budget process. So.
I concur. Very nice.
Yes, very good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, that was the last one. So, we'll have more for you next meeting.
All right. Next is consent agenda. Ms. Curtis.
Thank you. The minutes and the dispersments are in your packet. Consent agenda number eight A, approval dispersments and payroll for June. And eight is the minutes. The approval of the minutes for the July first, 2025, City Council Regular Meeting. All matters listed under item thirteen consent agenda are considered routine business by the council and will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
All right. Discussion, corrections, or additions? In that case, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd like to make resolutions for the acceptance of A and B.
Second.
All right. So, you got that? You did that?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I guess we don't. So, okay. So, I have a resolution by Jim Parks, a second by Jeff Morford, vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
All right. Next is reports by officials and staff.
Okay. Just got a couple of things. Did want to take the opportunity to thank the radio station for another successful year to Bob Stock. I know the, the rain may have not fully cooperated on Friday, but there was, I think the food trucks still were selling food and the beer gardens were still open. And, and so, there were still a lot of people downtown, even after it rained. So, it was kind of crazy living in that environment. I got to see it all firsthand. So, but very successful and we appreciate those efforts for that event, because I think that's just one of those nice, big, positive things that our community sees. And the amount of people that come to our community just for the event is pretty amazing. So, the other thing that kind of goes hand in hand with that discussion is because of that rain event, there was a lot of localized street flooding during that. Our friends over on Eighth Avenue, I've now talked to several of them and walked them through where we are. And so, I thought I'd just take this opportunity to bring Council up to speed on where we are with the stormwater improvements that we're looking at for that Eighth Avenue to hopefully alleviate, I will never use the word eliminate, but greatly alleviate the flooding problems that we're seeing over there. We've been in a eight-to-ten month process of working through CDOT on permitting. This project will cross two state highways and interstate highway that are all under the jurisdiction of CDOT. And so, working through their hoops has been of utmost importance. So, but I can let you know that we have a fully completed design. We've gone through the drainage division of CDOT and we just actually, yesterday, received notification from the traffic division that they thought we were ready to proceed forward to the permitting side of things, which is good news. And so, we have money in this fiscal budget for that project. If we get through the permitting side with CDOT, we're gonna have to look at what the timing of that looks like, just because of the traffic down in that area and when's the best time to actually go out to bid and everything. So, my conversations with the residents have been where if things would go as I would anticipate them going, we might be able to get this thing out to bid this winter and then go into construction then in the spring of 2026. So, keep our fingers crossed that everything we've heard from CDOT is still good and we can get a permit and, and get moving on it and, and, and get some relief to the residents over there. So, and that was all I had for you. So.
All righty.
Yeah, I was gonna ask.
Oh, okay. They had a meeting on that. They are moving forward with addressing some soft spots that were found and with that. And everything on that Phase One is still moving forward as anticipated. And so, sometime in August is when that Phase One should be ready to have traffic on it. So, everything so far has been good.
Phase two.
Phase two is the tracks and the south side or is it south side then the tracks? Yeah, south side then the tracks. So, yeah, yeah. Yeah, the deadline for the south side wasn't the same as the deadline on, on Phase One. And that's for cold connect. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
Brent, sticking with the roads, I'm getting a lot of comments and a lot of questions on that small little patch on Burlington when it's gonna be fixed. It's getting worse and worse as time goes on.
Is it? I will just have to check with our on-call patch crew and see when they're slated to come in. It's, yeah. Yeah, on that side. Yep, the two-hundred block. So, it's on the list. I know that. It's paving season is always one of those where we, yeah, live and die by when they can get their trucks out here. But we'll, we'll keep on them about it. So.
It needs some gravel or something.
If it needs some millings put in there, we'll, we'll get some millings put in it then. So.
This, this storm didn't help.
Oh, yeah. That's true. Yeah, I'm sure it probably got washed out on Friday. So, yep.
All right.
I'm just gonna bring up the same thing I continually bring up since April and tell you a little bit about some of the statistics and some of the things that we're doing and how we've made some changes to the weed stuff. Since April, as of about three o'clock this afternoon, we had four hundred and sixty-four weed violations. If you look at these pages, each one of these have sixty-four different violations on them, where our staff has addressed this as a weed violation, typically a warning on the first offense and then going back, they have to go back again. So, this, this shows a follow-up date. They go back to make sure it got mowed. Many times, they don't get mowed and it ends up in a ticket or it ends up in us having to hire another company to come mow it or something like that. But the mere fact that we drive by and see a property does not mean it gets mowed, right? I think people don't understand that we can be addressing a property and yet that doesn't solve the problem, because we don't have a mower on our car to go mow their, their weeds for them. So, we've dealt with this over and over and over again. And out of these four hundred and sixty-four, well over four hundred of them have one violation. It's not the same house. So, I don't know how many homes we have in Fort Morgan. Brent might be able to tell you, but
Four thousand.
Four thousand. So, about ten percent or more have been offenders of this. Most of you up here have probably never had the police contact you about refuse or weeds, but these people are, still are. So, we've tried everything we can through social media, through all of these different avenues. In fact, last week, we put out a, a social media post that had over seventy-one thousand views on weeds. And yet, we still have no compliance. Last week, we had one of our code enforcement officers gone and things continually got worse and worse. So, we did what I, my last resort, and that's having patrol help with that. And the reason I say that's the last resort is, A, it costs us a lot more money to have a patrol officer doing something that is a code enforcement job. And B, it's taking away from all of those things we're trying to accomplish with working speeding and some of the things that we've discussed here. So, I don't want to do that. But as you know, we have two code enforcement officers that are full-time. One of them has been working, has been out with an injury for almost a year, came back and is on still modified duty, can't do all of her duties, and they're training another one. So, with them trying to keep up and there's no way they can keep up with that many violations, we have, I think today, between yesterday and today, we wrote a little over twenty tickets. There's probably thirty-eight more that I know of that will be getting tickets. And when I say that, it's because, as I told you before, people are running from code enforcement, going in the door, locking the door and trying to just not answer it, that's the way. Yesterday, we experienced a person not say anything, walk in the house, go out the back door and grab a mower and try mowing to get out of a ticket. Today, we had somebody not answer the door and then when the officer left, ran out the back door, got into the car and tried to drive away, got pulled over to get their ticket. So, these people are doing everything they can to avoid it. So, there's thirty-eight people that tonight will be getting knocks, door knocks to get tickets still. So, it's not solving the problem, clearly. Another plea, we don't want to do this. We would much rather just have people comply and the only way we're gonna get this problem solved is through compliance. I will also say, through the contractors, we've hired thirteen different contractors this year, thirteen work orders for people that still refuse to mow their weeds or, or businesses that don't take care of them, at a cost of twenty-four hundred ninety-five dollars to the taxpayer. With that, we charge administrative fees. There's a two-hundred-dollar fee for the first offense, five hundred dollars for the second, and a thousand for the third. Two of those people have, this is their second offense, they paid a five-hundred-dollar additional fee to that contractor for doing it. And the rest of them have paid two hundred. So, total, it's been five thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars billed back to the public for not mowing the weeds. So, it's an expensive ticket. It's a hundred and twenty-dollar ticket. It's much more if we have to mow the weeds and, and I'm just making that plea again to try to get it addressed, so we don't have to go that route.
Lauren, I got one for you. I had a guy call me today and we discussed a little bit of that. And so, people know, you may have not gotten a warning this year. You got a warning last year or warning sometime, and that means that you're getting a ticket this time, correct?
And, and I mean, honestly, we're gonna go to the point of we're writing a ticket if there's a violation.
Okay.
Would we've done that many? I mean, that's literally every block in town has had at least one warning.
Sure.
The word has gotten out there. We, we've made plenty of warnings. It's not working. So, if people start getting tickets, we just hit about three streets and hit those roughly sixty houses in the last two days. That's three streets, you know, twelve blocks long or whatever. So.
Are you going by the name on the, or the property itself? In case a guy sells it, you know, the guy?
Yeah, well, that, a lot of that is what's the problem with catching, catching people, because we have a lot of foreclosed properties that maybe the bank owns or maybe somebody of property owners are living in Denver. So, we go to the person who's responsible for mowing it. Depends on
Okay.
Situation. If you're renting a place and you are the person responsible for mowing it, because you're the renter, then yes. But if you're a property management company, we're going after the property management. And the property management company are typically the ones that are getting that, those thirteen work orders, because there isn't an individual responsible for it. It's a company responsible. So, they're the ones that have to pay the fees typically when we hire somebody.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Anything in back?
All righty. Uh, one quick reminder, all that water that tears up our roads and everything else, the skeeters are loving it. If you're getting half the phone calls that Brent and I am probably getting, just wanted to remind everyone that we do contract VDCI to regularly trap and fog based off of that. Also, too, if they call the hotline, they can either have a specific area treated, assessed, and at the same time, be taken off that fogging schedule. So, if you have any constituents or people in the public who do reach out, just remind them on the city website, that hotline does exist, as well as the trap data and the fogging that we do on a weekly basis. That's just one reminder.
All right.
You want the phone number for that one?
Actually, go ahead and read it.
Mr. Radio. Yeah, the hotline number is eight-seven-seven-two-seven-six-four-three-zero-six.
All right. Next is bids, meetings, and announcements.
Okay. So, this Thursday, the seventeenth, is the golf course advisory board meeting at the Coiled Dudes Clubhouse at three-thirty. Monday, the twenty-first, is the library advisory board meeting at four-thirty. And the twenty-fourth is the Museum Heritage Foundation meeting at four P.M. And on the twenty-eighth is the planning commission board meeting at four-thirty P.M.
No bids?
I'm sorry, I didn't print out the bids, but I can, I can give them to you right now. It might not be in perfect order. There's the chief remote building services bid open and it is due by four o'clock, three o'clock this Friday. And then, there's the underwriting bond, bond underwriting services bid due next Friday, no, the twenty-third at three P.M. And banking services is also due by the twenty-third at three P.M. We have another one. Those are the most recent ones.
Okay. All right, good. Okay, next, we'll be going into an executive sessions, two sessions. First one for the purpose of determining, determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing a strategy for negotiations and/or instructing negotiations under CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, additional industrial connection to the city wastewater treatment facility. Second one will be for the purpose of determining position relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations or instructing negotiators under the same CRS with additional details, economic incentives. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Motion to adjourn and go into executive session?
Okay, so I have a motion by Bill Garcia, second by John Caper. All those favors say aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Your Honor, can I, can I ask one quick favor? I know Western Sugar has about six representatives here. And so, with staff, council, and all the representatives, it may be a little crowded in our normal chambers. We can go ahead and meet here if we go ahead and let the audience leave and then we turn off our recording equipment and everything, if that's acceptable to you.
Works for me. Anybody else have a problem with it?
Very good. Your sandwiches are sitting in there boxed up. If you would like to grab those and bring them in, your choice.